Good evening and welcome to Spokane City Council. I'd like to start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they share this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We will be having open testimony on the consent agenda as soon as Mr. Jacoby gives me the list. So first up on the consent agenda is Will Hewlings and then Cherry Hill. And you have three minutes. Timer.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings and I live downtown Spokane. I strongly oppose OPR 2024-0730, a proposal that seeks pre-purchase approval for Ford Lightning electric vehicles for the water department. At a cost not to exceed $220,000, while I fully support the need for reliable vehicles to maintain our cities right away, I cannot support the wasteful expenditure of nearly $220,000 on electric vehicles that are both costly and impractical for our climate. First and foremost, electric vehicles are not well-suited for Spokane's cold winter climates. During cold months, electric vehicles' batteries experience reduced efficiency, meaning shorter range and longer charging times. This issue becomes even more pronounced when city workers are out in the field performing critical maintenance work and cannot afford delays due to charging issues or reduced performance. Electric vehicles, including the Ford Lightning, are simply not built to withstand the significant battery drain that cold weather causes. And you can look this all up. Just look at what happened in February with all these electric vehicles like in Chicago because it got down to five degrees and they wouldn't charge. Furthermore, the city of Spokane could save a significant amount of money by opting for traditional internal combustion engines instead of expensive electric models. Gas-powered trucks like the Ford F-150 or even the diesel F-250 are more affordable to purchase upfront, easier to maintain, and perform better in cold weather. The average cost of a standard F-150 is significantly lower than a Ford Lightning and it doesn't require costly charging infrastructure. Like, that's something else you gotta add to electric vehicles. So it also raises the questions, why are public servants insisting on vehicles that the average Spokane person will never drive? You think I'm never gonna be... It's ridiculous that you guys as public servants think you need to be driving around electric vehicles that cost crazy amount of money. But I sent you my speech, so hopefully you read that.
Thank you, Will. Cherry Hewlings. And then after Cherry, Wendy Fishburne.
I support the purchase of the aforementioned EVs. They're a good investment in future environments. Future generations deserve clean air and clean water and less reliance on fossil fuels The argument that EVs are not dependable in cold weather, that's news to cities like Minneapolis, Minnesota, who operates 40 EVs in their city fleet, Madison, Wisconsin, who operates 85, Chicago, Illinois, who operates 112. Recently, the city of Buffalo, tends to get a little cold there too, invested a million dollars in EV charging stations. EVs are our future, folks. Fight it all you want, but they're coming. I yield the podium.
Thank you, Cherry. Wendy? And then after Wendy, Andrew Northbrook.
Good evening, City Council. I usually am prepared and I'm not prepared tonight, so forgive my casual speech. So I have two themes in my mind, which is, you know, protect the unhoused and protect the citizens. Several of... I'm a marriage and family therapist and also often go to the homeless coalition. And several of us were there last week, hearing about, you know, great resources that are coming. But the most important question that I heard was the last one, and I'll get to... I'm looking at item number 17 on here. The question was, the main frost begins in October and they're closing track October 31st. So I'm looking at item 17 on here, and there are $4 million that are coming to the community housing and human services. That's a lot of money that we could use to fund track through March. We're looking at a freight train. We know winter's coming and as we all heard there, there's no plan for what to do with these 200 people that are stabilized there now. So protect them, please, and fund track through March. It's not perfect, it's not permanent, it's just protecting them through the winter. The second one is, of course, item 28, which is the law enforcement reduction. So we heard a big outcry from the citizens today who are concerned about the spikes in crime. So I guess as our public people, I would ask you to protect the hurting, protect the fragile through the winter that we know is coming, and protect the citizens as we are also dealing with the current spike in crime. So thank you so much for all you do. Appreciate you all. Take good care.
Andrew?
Councilmembers, thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate the work that you guys do. I know it's tough being on different sides of the aisle, competing with different interests between community members, business owners, residents. I just want to encourage you to continue to listen to all of us with an equal voice, even though we're maybe new to learning how to work with neighborhood councils. We do respect that that process is ingrained in our culture and in the city governance and, you know, that we're gonna be patient. We've been here as business owners for a long time and we're gonna continue to be here and part of the backbone of the community that's built. Today, going to Chef Chad White's closing was honestly heartbreaking as an oyster lover myself, a big proponent of Chad and what he's done to the culture and the community. It is sad to lose a member like that. And so just continue to work with us, business owners, and we will do the same and learn how you guys operate your business. So appreciate you all and thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We will be taking item number four and number 17 separately. So with that, I will entertain a motion of approval for the others.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, the ayes have it. Next, we'll go to item number four. And that is the preapproval to purchase the 2024 Ford Lightning electric vehicles. Council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think EVs are pretty cool. The mandates, obviously, that have been put on us are uncool and... But we are in a situation where we have to comply with certain state mandates. And while I think that these vehicles, all things considered, are more expensive than what we should be paying, we don't want to leave our departments without the vehicles they need to do the job. And so the fact that we're forced to buy electric vehicles is wrong, but we are in the situation that we are. And unfortunately, the state has impressed upon us certain mandates that we have to be working toward. And so I'll be supporting tonight, even though if the mandates were not here, I would not be supporting, but tonight I'll be voting for it. One last thing I want to say on this actually is, you know, Cherry, I heard what you said, but Spokane is almost 48 degrees north. The furthest north city that you had mentioned was Minneapolis, which is less than 45 degrees north. And so, yes, do they experience extreme temperature? Yes, the city of Spokane experiences cold, cold, cold. And absolutely, in those moments, there is reliability concerns and I hope we don't run into those too badly.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll just say, the mandate starts in 2030, really, and so until 2030, I have no interest in paying for cars that are both overpriced, too luxurious for government employees, and something that my constituents will frankly never have the opportunity to own and drive. It is inappropriate for us to be purchasing these types of vehicles when they're not necessary for the job at hand.
Any council commentary? I will comment that the charging infrastructure is already being put in and so that is already included in the service of these vehicles. Number four, item... Please prepare to vote on number four.
We can do it oral.
Oh, we can do oral, he says. All those in favor of number four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Noes?
No.
You got me, buddy.
Two noes. Any abstentions? Measure passes. Number 17. Again...
Council President, did you miss my... To speak on the consent agenda, Elaine Mansour? I spoke to them earlier today. Can I speak?
Yes, I did. Elaine is not on my list, but we're double-checking right now.
I spoke to Elaine.
Yeah, go ahead, Elaine. I don't see you signed up for that particular item, but go ahead.
Okay. Perfect. Come on up. Sorry for that error.
Good evening, Council President and council members. I am pleased to speak today on behalf of the Salvation Army. My name is Elaine and I began my role as a social services director back in April. And you see me quietly up there quite often, but I also want to say that at the end of July, we had a new grant writer start with us and in April, or in August, excuse me, she was put in my department. Today, you are reviewing recommended funding to some wonderful partners in our community. The Salvation Army was not included in that list. We requested funding for SAFE, which is a Salvation Army family emergency shelter, a scattered site shelter. We also included stepping stones and the Way Out Center. The family shelter has 11 units, each with kitchenettes, bathroom, a small living area, and beds for six to seven people. We currently have no funding available for this 90-day emergency shelter program, but you and I both know there is a need. We were not funded, unfortunately, because our new grant writer did not answer a couple of questions, which rated us lower on the chart than some of our partners. But SAFE needs... We need SAFE in our communities to fund, have these families for 90 days in the program. We are taking steps to prevent this from happening again. We're working with the city. Something happened on 1590 also, and making sure that I'm on neighborly and our business directors on neighborly. What I am proposing is that the recommendation you have in front of you has a balance of 184,000, which is then divided between all the 10 organizations. I'm asking you to reconsider that and instead take that 184,000 so we can fund SAFE for about half the year, if not more. Secondly, as you make decisions today that impact track, I'd like to share how proud I am of the work that has been provided at track and has built a community for our unsheltered guests and neighbors. Last winter, there were about 500 guests at track during the winter. Our current contract is for 250 people. We have decreased that number to about 180 since September 1 when we met with the city per their request. We continue to partner weekly with our other partners to keep that number decreasing. Here's my two concerns. First, a few of the people have moved to bridging or transitional housing, but they're struggling to remain or stay in it. They're not ready for housing, and they aren't ready for a program. They need shelter. Second, as mentioned a second ago, the first frost is reported around October 2. Seventh, closing October 31st could leave more people unsheltered and in the cold. My first request, reconsider the 184,000 and award it to the Salvation Army for the SAFE program, the family shelter. Second, come meet with us at the Salvation Army. I'll be reaching out to you. Let's see what options there are that we could partner with together. We have transitional, we have family shelters, we've done track shelters, warming shelters, et cetera. We have solutions that together we can work on. I thank you for your work and thank you for listening to me.
Any council commentary on number 17, the overview of the community housing? Hearing none. Do you want to speak, Councilmember Cathcart? All those in favor of number 17, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. On to...
Council President? We missed some board and commission appointments earlier.
Oh, we did. We got right into business. We have two appointments to the Arts Commission. One reappointment. I have those names at my fingertips.
Do you want the names?
Yes, Cherry, thank you. The one to the Arts Human Rights first.
The Human Rights Commission, appointment of Livia Ko to the Spokane Human Rights Commission for a term of September 9, 2024 to September 9, 2025. She serves as the Commission's designated youth representative. And two appointments to the Arts Commission, Suzanne Oster Smith for a term of September 9, 2024 to September 9, 2027, and appointment of James Pakoudis for a term of September 9, 2024 to September 9, 2027.
Any council commentary?
Can we take human rights separately?
We can take a human rights separately. Commentary on human rights? All those in favor of the reappointment of the Human Rights Council, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. On to the Arts Commission. Any commentary on the Arts Commission appointments? Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, we have two excellent candidates. I'm really excited to see what they'll bring and I'm glad that they've been engaged and kind of connected with Spokane Arts prior to this and look forward to them serving. Thanks for your service.
All those in favor of the two appointments to the Art Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention, the ayes have it. Again, thank you for stepping up and serving. Spokane needs you. All right, on to our legislative agenda this evening.
Special Budget Ornance C 36568, demanding ordinance number C 36467 passed by the City Council November 27, 2023, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2024, making appropriations of various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declaring an emergency appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 36568, American Rescue Plan Fund Number One, increase appropriation by $1,224,512.54. A of the increased appropriation, $1,224,512.54, is provided solely for an operating transfer out to the general fund. And general fund, number one, increase revenue by $1,774,512.54. A of the increased revenue, $1,224,512.54, is provided solely for an operating transfer in from the American Rescue Plan Fund in the Police Department. B of the increased revenue, $550,000, is provided solely for an operating transfer in from the American Rescue Plan Fund in the Community Justice Services Department. Two, increase appropriation by $1,774,512.54. A of the increased appropriation, $665,013.54, is provided solely for terminated sick leave pay in the Police Department. B of the increased appropriation, $559,499, is provided solely for terminated vacation leave pay in the Police Department. C of the increased appropriation, $550,000, is provided solely for base wages in the Community Justice Services Department. This action arises from the need to fund terminated pay for early SPD retirees and correct a previous ARPA allocation.
Any council commentary? All... Please prepare to vote.
Ordinance C 36569, Facilities Management Capital Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $3,781,306. A of the increased appropriation, $3,781,306, is provided solely for machinery equipment in the Solid Waste Department. This action arises from the need to purchase trucks for operations in the Solid Waste Collections Department.
Any council commentary?
Resolution 2024-83, recognizing the contributions of sports officials in the city of Spokane.
We have several public comments. First is Will Hewlings. Next is Bob West.
My name is Will Hewlings and I live downtown Spokane. I strongly support... I strongly support Resolution 2024-0083, a resolution that recognizes the invaluable role sports officials play in our community and proposes the establishment of a sports officials appreciation month. Participation in athletics has long been an integral part of American society, teaching the core values of fair play, respect for authority, and teamwork. In addition to players, coaches, and fans, sports officials are critical to the success of every athletic contest, acting as neutral arbiters and ensuring that the rules are fairly and impartially implemented. Their contribution is key to promoting the important life lessons learned through sports. Growing up in Medical Lake, Washington, I was fortunate enough to play high school sports throughout my time there. I played football, wrestled, and was part of the baseball team. During the summer, I volunteered to officiate Little League baseball games, and it was in that role that I first truly understood the importance of sports officials. As a young referee, I felt like I was part of something much bigger than myself, helping to create a fair and respectful environment for young athletes. I saw firsthand the critical role that sports officials play, not just in ensuring that the game runs smoothly, but it teaches young players the values of teamwork, respect for authority, and sportsmanship. So I've got a lot more I could say, but the city of Spokane has a responsibility to express our appreciation to all sports officials, from recreational leagues to school programs who give their time and energy to promote sportsmanship and fair play. I strongly support Resolution 2024-0083. It is a resolution that highlights the importance of sports officials and their role in shaping positive behavior, both on and off the field. But that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Bob West? Welcome.
Thank you, Council President, council members. Thank you for your consideration in this resolution supporting sports officials. For those of you who don't know my story, I'm Bob West and I was a referee that was headbutted in 1996 by a high school wrestler here in Washington State and knocked unconscious. As a result of this vicious attack, I had to give up my officiating career and have undergone four neck surgeries. These attacks continue at an alarming rate and we are losing many sports officials as a result. Since that attack, I have been an advocate locally and at the national level and have spread the word of sportsmanship on several talk shows. In 2003, the Washington State Legislature passed House Resolution Number 2003-4636, recognizing the decline of sportsmanship, the importance of fair play, and contributions of sports officials. In 2023, 35,813 sports officials took a survey with the National Association of Sports Officials. 677 were from the state of Washington. Close to 70% believe sportsmanship is getting worse and over half stated they felt unsafe or feared for their safety. I would like to thank Councilmember Bingle for his shepherding this resolution along with Councilmember Cathcart and the rest of the council. Another shout-out would be for Rich Shergy, who's sitting in the back, who's the assigning secretary for the Inland Northwest Wrestling Association, who has been instrumental in supporting our efforts along with the other sports organizations and officials that might be here this evening. A special thank you to my daughter, the past deputy mayor of Spokane Valley, for her resources and accompanying me to Olympia, Brandy Peets, to testify on last year's House Bill 2079, which recognized sports officials and addressed the ever-growing issues of assaults, harassment, and the epidemic of loss of these officials to watch over our games. Because of the short session, it passed the House unanimously, 97 to zero, which is unheard of, but it stalled in the Senate Committee. I also authored a book called Rage on the Field and have a copy of one of these for each of you, chronicling the incident and issues surrounding sportsmanship. I will be bringing this legislation during the next session together with backing by State Representative Suzanne Schmidt, who's here with us this evening as well. If I may, I would like to have her say a few words. And lastly, thank you from the bottom of my heart for this honor, recognizing sports officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. If she can get the books to the clerk, she'll get them to us. Thank you. Representative Schmidt, welcome.
Thank you, Council President Wilkerson and the rest of the council. So I'm Representative Suzanne Schmidt and I sponsored the bill to protect referees last session. My cosponsor was Representative Marcus Ruchelli and we did, as Bob West said, we were able to pass that in the House. I'm just gonna tell a little story about when I... You know, when Bob approached me, when Mr. West approached me about running this legislation, I started to do my own, you know, research and stakeholder meetings. And what I wanted to say is, of all, every sports official that I interviewed, 100% of them have been either physically or verbally assaulted. The story that moved me the most was a 15-year-old boy that was refereeing a soccer game. And during that soccer game, he made a call that some of the adults on the sideline didn't like, and so they were calling him names on the sideline. He asked them to leave. When he left the game after refereeing the game, he was going... Because he couldn't drive, so he was going to the parking lot to wait on the sidewalk for his parents to pick him up. Those same adults were in the parking lot and they were making intimidating statements towards him, calling him profane names. And this was a 15-year-old boy that was, you know, really volunteering. And this was a fifteen-year-old boy that was, you know, dedicating, really volunteering his time. I think he did get paid minimal, but, you know, pretty much giving his time because he loves the sport, and he knows how much participating in sports is beneficial to our community and, and in kids, learning how to be part of a team and learning how to be leadership and, and commitment to other people. And so that was really the story that shook me the most and, and really motivated me to run this legislation. So I will be running it again this session, but would be absolutely honored if the city of Spokane would vote for this resolution and put this in place and just recognize sports official and what they're doing for our communities, and that they deserve to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I just want to thank the council for taking this up. Thank you for allowing me to make the switch to September today. I appreciate that. I also want to thank the, the Board of County Commissioners. I know they're going to be taking this up tomorrow so that we can sort of send a unified regional message to, to Olympia to say, hey, we think this is a good idea, and whatever stalled it last time, let's get that out of the way. Let's, let's support our sports officials. As someone who has frequently been a court monitor at, at Hoot Fest or, you know, called a number of AAU games myself, I know exactly what everybody's talking about. I had a quick ejection finger myself. I was like, I'm not dealing with that. Get it out of here. But, but it's a, it's a serious problem, and if we truly want our children to be able to have opportunities to, to play in sports, you have to have people who are officiating it. And I know that this council is interested in investing in youth and particularly youth sports. I mentioned this earlier, but in our ARPA allocation that Councilmember Navarrete and I were putting together, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA towards youth sports. And so I think that is fully consistent with who we are as a body and as a city, and I'm, I'm thankful for, for Bob and Representative Schmidt and all the work that you guys are doing. Thankful for Representative Ruchelli for cosponsoring and taking that up, and I think it's a good, good sign of community support, so, yeah.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Good to see you, Bob. Thank you so much, Representative Schmidt. And, yeah, I didn't know that Mr. Hewlings and I had this in common. I was also a baseball coach and official and certainly dealt with a lot, you know, and I think that, as we hear more and see more and more evidence of the increased risk, you know, to officials, it is a real challenge. There was one little line in this resolution that I was challenged with that I mentioned to Councilmember Bingle. You know, it's, it's hard to get it right all the time, but to officials, coaches, everyone involved, but there's better ways of dealing with that conflict, and it should never result in the risk of someone who really is there to, to oversee the game. So, thank you for bringing this up.
Any commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you, Ms. Fister.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash eighty-four, to authorize city Spokane Engineering Services Department staff to enter into contracts for WSDOT-funded projects for on-call basis contracts with specialty consultants.
No counsel commentary? No public commentary? Prepare to vote. Wash talk, Resolution zero zero eight-four? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash eighty-five of the city of Spokane, Washington, providing for the issuance and sale of taxable limited tax general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed four million dollars. Establishing interfund loan facilities from the Spokane investment pool to finance capital needs for waste, energy, equipment, vehicles, and apparatus, fixing the date, form, maturity, interest rate, terms, and covenants of the bonds. Establishing the provisions for drawing on the interfund loan established thereby, authorizing the sale and delivery of the bonds to the city, and providing further matters properly relating thereto.
There is no public comment? Counselor commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Ordinance C thirty-six, five sixty-seven, renaming the Office of Police Ombudsman and the Office of Police Ombudsman Commission, amending Sections four point thirty-two point zero one zero through four point thirty-two point zero four zero, Sections four point thirty-two point zero six zero through four point thirty-two point one ten, Section four point thirty-two point one thirty, and Sections four point thirty-two point one fifty through four point thirty-two point one sixty of the Spokane municipal code.
One public comment?
All right. Good evening again. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. I want to express my strong opposition to ordinance C three-six, five, six, seven, which seeks to amend the title of Office of Police Ombudsman to Office of Police Ombuds. The term ombudsman has served our city of Spokane and countless other communities across the United States for decades. It is a title that has always been understood to be gender-neutral, and there is no compelling reason to change it now. This push to replace ombudsman with ombuds is clearly part of a broader effort to cater to a woke agenda which seeks to make changes for the sake of inclusivity, even when those changes are unnecessary. Frankly, I see this change as a waste of time and resources. The term ombudsman has never been an issue, and altering it to ombuds doesn't solve any real problems. It's a superficial change that designed to appease those who prioritize political correctness over common sense. I don't believe this city should be indulging in these kinds of symbolic gestures that ultimately do nothing to improve the lives of the residents of Spokane. Let's be clear, this move is about making a small group of people feel good about themselves by imposing their views on the rest of us. It's part of a trend where everything that offends a certain group gets erased or renamed. This isn't progress, it's pandering. If the Democrats had their way, they would rename everything in our city that they find remotely offensive, chipping away at our traditions and common sense. As a community, we need to stand firm against this kind of unnecessary change. The title ombudsman has served us well, and there is no good reason to change it now. I do want to address any Republicans who may be tempted to support this ordinance. You should be ashamed. You should be ashamed. By supporting this, you are not just betraying your constituents, but also allowing the left to chip away at the values we hold dear. We need to stand strong and say no more. This changing names and all this is just nonsense, and it's a trend that's happening. You can look it up.
Thank you, Will. Counselor commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, ombuds, ombudsman, I don't really care personally, but what was voted on by and approved by seventy percent of the folks I represent, myself included in voting for this, in two thousand and thirteen, says, this proposition will amend the Spokane City Charter, which is our city constitution, by adding two new sections to provide for the establishment of an Office of Police Ombudsman, a Police Ombudsman Commission, and the independent investigative authority of both entities. Excuse me. Words matter. We shouldn't change what the charter says. We could easily put something on a ballot, let the folks correct if we really believe that this should be corrected. We can easily do that. Ultimately, though, I'd probably be fine with this ordinance if it made it clear that we weren't trying to magically change the name, but instead, this is a DBA, doing business as, or referred to as, and to me, that would be appropriate. That's fine. If you want to put that in code and say, this is what we're going to refer to something as, and make it clear that we're referring to it as this, different than what it is established, that's fine. But the charter is the charter. I have seen plenty of attempts to change interpretations of, of the charter, to, you know, try to interpret things in different ways, and this one is so blatant. My, part of my duty as an elected official sitting on this dais is to uphold the charter. And so I will not be supporting this tonight. But again, at the end of the day, it's not the, it's, it's a very small thing. I personally really honestly don't care, and if we wanted to go to the voters as part of a big cleanup and say, change this, I'd be fine with it. But the charter is the charter, and it's established that way by a vote of the people, not by this body.
Councilmember McCluskey?
It's true, this is happening. We call police officers, police officers now. We don't say policeman. We don't say fireman. We say firefighter. This is just the normalization of different genders being able to do jobs. The word ombudsman is a Swiss word. It was never meant to have a gender value, but it's a Swiss word, and people are misunderstanding it. So the suggestion from our police ombudsman office was to change it to ombudsman, and I think that's pretty in line with the way that we speak now in modern times. So I will be supporting this.
Councilmember McCluskey? Never brought to you?
Thank you. I believe that this ordinance only changes the name, nothing in the charter, and when I also voted in two thousand and thirteen, it was to adopt the office, not the name. So, again, I'm in total support of this. It's two thousand and twenty-four, times are changing. We have to be open to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and respect, you know, the beliefs of other people. Just because we don't agree with them doesn't mean that we have to be disrespectful or not apply to them.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, so this request came from the Office of the soon-to-be ombuds itself, and really was just part of some of the code cleanup language. When the office was created, you know, again, with the, by vote of the people, seventy percent, as Councilmember Cathcart mentioned, you know, they were voting for the, the duties of the office. That was part of the kind of impetus behind this name change, and it is corollary to some of the other name changes that have happened with similar offices of accountability. Think Councilmember McCluskey put it very well, too, with just some of our, you know, police officers, firefighters. It never crossed my mind, honestly, when the Bart Logue came to us with this, that this was part of the woke agenda. I could definitely use some more sleep tonight. That was a really bad dad joke. Sorry about that. But it really is, I think, kind of, again, not the, not the end of the world. It's not going to change the scope of the office. We love Bart Logue. If we ever did have a woman in that role, obviously, we would want to be respective of the name change. So that was the, the impetus behind this ordinance.
Prepare to vote. There's no more counsel commentary? Thank you.
First reading ordinance, C thirty-six, five seventy-one, granting to BNSF Railway Company and Delaware Corporation a franchise agreement for the right to construct, maintain, and operate a railway within certain described limits of the city of Spokane for a period of twenty-five years. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We have several public comment. First is from Joe Ader. Is Joe in the audience? I don't see Joe.
Terry Hill, Spokane. This ordinance calls for a twenty-five-year contract for BNSF, BNSF, to construct, maintain, and operate railway through Spokane, through the Spokane area. This area is very important to Spokane, the seventy miles between Spokane and Rafterham, they call the funnel. Basically, any train traveling east to west funnels through our city. Most of us know that because we sit in traffic for twenty-five, thirty, forty-five minutes waiting for the trains to clear. BNSF last year cleared six point six billion dollars, yet they hide behind federal legislation that says they can't pay for infrastructure projects. With all that money and the fact that they own the regional politicians, you'd think maybe they could figure out how to bend those rules a little bit. I recommend a five-year contract and a slice of humble pie. They need, they need to realize how important Spokane is to their operation. I thank all of you for your service to Spokane and how you'll go podium.
Thank you, Terry.
Sorry, I was being distracted. Dave Billsman, Logan, howdy, folks. What are we doing here? We're giving Burlington Northern a sweetheart deal, and we don't make a penny off it? And if they have an accident, they only have to pay two million? And for twenty-five years? Give me a break. First of all, we need to make sure that they pay for everything if there's an accident, and there have been derailments. I've been watching this for quite a few years. You want me to start naming off cities? Where it has happened? I can name one, Spokane in the early seventies. Only two million indemnified? Horsepucky! In twenty-five years? Every five years, it needs to be revisited. Not twenty-five years. And they should be pulling up some cash for this. They're making a ton of money off of it. Where's our share for Spokane? I'm very serious about this. I don't care what's done around the rest of the country. Since when does Spokane do like everybody else? Okay? We need to charge them for this, and we also need bigger insurance policy than two lousy million. What does it cost when an oil train derails? You know it's a lot more than two million. This is a sweetheart deal that needs to be revisited. I for one stand against this. It's a sweetheart deal, and it's bullcrap. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Ms. Fister, on to the next.
S one, recommendations from the Tourism and Cultural Investment Committee for funding allocations.
There's no public comment? Counselor commentary?
Yeah, I'll speak to this. Having chaired the committee meetings, we had some great volunteers who put in a lot of time and a lot of organizations who put in a lot of time applying, and we were really thoughtful about a process of getting out these funds in a way that can build the capacity, and that's why we renamed it Cultural Investment, is truly trying to fund organizations to kind of be a catalyst or a spark and grow into great, great events in the future. And so I want to thank the committee's work for all the meetings. It was quite time-intensive at the beginning, since we haven't had a committee. It was a brand-new committee, and it's very exciting to get these funds out, the first funds that have gone out the door for this funding since the pandemic. And so we're really excited to support these organizations.
Thank you. Okay, revote. Technical error. That ends our legislative agenda. We will now go on to open forum. Open forum is for two minutes. All comments are directed to the chair. We ask you, please be respectful. First up is Stephen Nelson, and then Suzanne Stewart.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Nelson. I'm with Southwest Spokane Community Center. We represent Brown's Edition. We serve about four hundred people weekly, and we also have a childcare, childcare program and an after-school program. We were just recently defunded with our community development grant, and we lost about a third of our income. This seems to all stem from the transition from the set-aside method of awarding these grants to the competitive RFP method of awarding these grants. We provide so much service to the community that it's a shame that in, at the end of this month, we'll be having to close our doors. I've sent a copy of an email to both you- I've sent a copy of an email to both you chairperson and my District III representatives as well, clarifying our position and hoping that you folks are able to do something to help us keep the doors open. This is a time-sensitive issue. Like I said, we only have till September 30th before we are forced to close the doors. We serve a niche in our community, unlike some of the other larger entities in town. We serve a very specific niche, and that's anything from the very young right up to our seniors. There's a lot of, of course, heavy drug use and mental health issues that we also take care of. We feed these folks, help them find resources, and we take care of the children. The children are a very important part of this. Without the child daycare program, we lose parents' ability to go seek employment and maintain employment. And we all know that childcare is an issue right now. The cost of childcare, childcare is tremendous right now. It's a presidential issue right now. So we'd hope that there's something that you folks can do, especially my District III folks. I'm hoping there's some way we could get together within the next few weeks and see if there's not a way forward with some intermittent funding of some sort. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Suzanne Stewart?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Stewart. Please forgive the way I'm dressed. I sort of got in a hurry to get down here. I'm just here again today just to ask you to please look into scraps and their use, their unethical use of killing animals that are healthy, that are adoptable, and they're not following the protocols that they state that they follow. I will meet with Mr. Dillon, and never whether she wants to meet with me after that. But again, thank you for the work you do. And I just want to implore that we've got to stop this now because animals are being killed that should not be killed, period. And scraps is there just to, they're there to protect people against animals. That is their mission statement. Nothing about being humane, nothing about being ethical. They are the police for, against animals. They are policing against animals for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Warbear and then Christine Quinn. Welcome, Warbear.
I think I was signed up to speak for the ordinance on, what was it, shelters and all that, but I think you guys missed me, so whatever. Winter's coming. I know if I was a Palestinian, I want someone to care about me. I know if I was houseless or other people that I know that are houseless, I want someone to care about me. Not gonna lie, winter's always been a time of hardship for me and my family with starvation and eviction. So it's not, it carries a lot of trauma for me personally. So I can only imagine what our relatives outside are going through, not only right now, but what they're going to go through in the winter. I really think we need to continue to put aside funding and budgeting to support our shelters so that we can support our houseless relatives. If we don't, I mean, they're going to freeze to death. They're going to die. They're going to have to deal with ammonia, you know, hypothermia, I mean, starvation, all these kinds of things, right? I mean, imagine how, you know, how hot it's been, right? That's a blessing in this time of year because, you know, you can live outside, right? I'll sleep down by the river sometimes. But in the winter, no, it's not good. So I've seen a lot of people on our reservations, especially my relatives, that, you know, they freeze to death or they lose parts of their bodies, you know, to the cold, and they don't have any shelter. Their heating doesn't work, and there aren't any federal or funding legislative policies that make sure that they get what they need in their homes for them to have to make it through the winter. That's something that's common on Pine Ridge and Standing Rock. So I really would like to help and support you guys putting aside money and funding and budgeting so that we can help our relatives get off the streets before winter hits because that's something that I keep in my mind a lot when I, when I'm walking around and I see how many of them are suffering day to day. You know, and it could be any one of us, right? I mean, a lot of us are one mischeck away from being houseless. So, you know, I want to help. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Warbear. Christine Quinn? Is she online?
Christine, if you're online, can you press star three?
Elaine Mansour? Is Elaine? Cherry Hill? Matthew Haber?
Good evening, members of the Spokane City Council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I come before you as a concerned citizen, deeply troubled by the recent changes to our zoning laws that now allow for large four and six-plex apartments to be built directly next to single-family homes. I understand the need for more housing, and I agree that Spokane must grow to meet the needs of our community. But allowing such developments in areas designed for single-family residences comes with significant and lasting consequences. We cannot overlook the impact these changes will have on the fabric of our neighborhoods. Many of us have chosen to live in these areas because they're quiet, stable nature, where families can grow and children can play in peaceful environments. By allowing large multi-unit buildings to be constructed next to these homes, we risk fundamentally changing what makes these neighborhoods special. Four and six-plex apartments will be bringing increased traffic, parking congestion, strain on the local infrastructure that was never designed to accommodate this type of density. These changes will create safety concerns and diminish the quality of life for the current residents. Additionally, property values may drop, and the sense of community that has taken years to build could be lost as single-family homes are overshadowed by larger, more imposing structures. This isn't about imposing growth or opposing growth, excuse me. It's about ensuring smart, balanced development. We should be focusing on transitional zoning, placing multi-unit buildings in areas where they fit naturally with the environment around them. There are countless creative solutions available, such as building smaller-scale housing options or encouraging responsible infill development in areas better suited for higher density. But building four-plexes and six-plexes next to single-family homes is not the answer.
Thank you, Matthew.
I urge you to consider-
Your two minutes is up. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Chess Johnson?
You can, you can email that if you'd like to us, and we'll get the rest of it.
Thank you. Chess Johnson, and then after Chess, Connor Desmond. Welcome.
So for the last four years in this town, I've been trying to schedule meetings with any public official, county, city council. I've had armed gunmen sent to my door by the county to embarrass and intimidate me to leave them alone. I've been arrested twice by Nadine Woodward because she didn't want to talk about crimes committed against me by her corrupt police force. Tried to get meetings with Lisa Brown. She doesn't want to because nobody ever wants to talk about anybody that wears a badge in this town. We're welcome to communicate your concerns by email. The mayor prefers not to hear your concerns or only hear your concerns by email, does not want to meet with you in person. You're instructed to not contact her in person. So I guess that's what I get with politicians. If I was talking about potholes, y'all would probably want to talk to me about it. Four years this has been going on. I've been arrested. I've been thrown in jail. I've had cops sent to my damn home because nobody wants to talk about anybody that wears a badge in this country. I risked my damn life for this country. I'm a disabled veteran. I've made mistakes and I've been punished for them. But when I see politicians who are more concerned about support by law enforcement and their protection because it's what's best for your, your career, it's disgusting. And there are people who risk life and limb for this country, and I have done it myself, and I've done their funerals, and I've sifted through the remains of dead, blown up, burnt alive, mutilated Marines in the middle of a damn desert to come back here, be around a bunch of politicians who aren't willing to risk a vote because nobody wants to talk about anybody that wears a badge in this country. I had a meeting with you a couple of weeks ago, Cathcart. It got canceled. I've emailed and called. I've left voicemails for the past two weeks and have yet to get a response. I would like to schedule a meeting with you now so we can talk about this, please. Because trying to go through correct channels, the last-
You'll have to connect with my assistant. I don't do this scheduling.
She won't, she won't do it. So I think I scheduled with you about the condition.
Yeah, thank you, Chess. Let's talk after. Thank you. Connor Desmond, and then Eric Snyder.
Yeah, I'm a resident of the Chief Gary Park neighborhood. I wanted to talk to all of you about the Compassion Addiction Treatment Center that's being put up in the neighborhood. Just a lot of concerns about it. We've seen a rise in the number of addicted and truly sick individuals just in the past 12 months in that neighborhood, even without the new treatment center. Our neighborhood is full of kids. It's a wonderful neighborhood, a lot like mine in the city that I grew up in. Streets, in the streets all the time, kids playing all day, all night. And we have a 10-month-old baby girl. And I'm really excited about that, excited for her to get to know all the kids in the neighborhood. With this treatment center coming in, I'm really worried about the health and safety of kids in the neighborhood, especially our daughter. We are trying to get a bunch of our friends, others my wife and I's age, to buy a house in the Chief Gary Park neighborhood. Since learning about the new Compassion Addiction Treatment Center, a couple of our friends, just within the last week, have told us that they have no interest in investing money into that neighborhood, which is really sad. Finally, this, this isn't a "not in my neighborhood" argument. The Chief Gary Park neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhood already has a ton of resources in place over there. I think that it's an incredibly important thing to give resources to these truly sick individuals. Is there a way that we can spread those resources to other neighborhoods and not necessarily just pack them all into one? Thank you.
Thank you. Is Sunshine in the house? Oh, there she comes. And after Sunshine, Sheri Barnett.
Sunshine Wiggins, Spokane. Loving kindness is a cultivated mental state in which our attention and concern are directed towards the happiness of others. I wrote this speech, but I kind of feel different now. I want to say thank you to all of you guys standing through thick and thin with me. And it isn't an us-and-them thing when it comes to the homeless. These guys have supported me just as much as my homeless community, if not more sometimes. And it pulled me through some very, very hard times where I didn't think I was going to make it. And because I was in a place that was at a bottom, I didn't always make the right choices. But knowing that these guys stood continuing to put out a positive example for us, it did lead me back to positive choices. And I just want to say thank you to this council for that. Another thing that I haven't brought up is, in these buildings that we're building with the Catholic charities, I'm not seeing, we have more amputations than we've ever had because of the fentanyl. And I'm not seeing where we have low-level sinks and things that accommodate people in wheelchairs in these buildings. And that kind of concerns me. So when we're building further projects, I'm asking that there be more wheelchair-accommodatable, I don't know if I said that right, apartments because of the high numbers of amputations. We're not just having frostbite amputations anymore. So I just want to say thank you for everything.
Thank you, Sunshine. Sheri, if you wait, Sheri, wait just a minute. I'm sorry, I skipped over Eric. If you come on up, and then Sheri, you're next, I promise.
Thank you for your time. I have the, I've been blessed to have some incredible neighbors who have, who have been there and been an incredible example for me moving here two years ago. And they're going through a very hard time. And it, it pains me to see both Suzanne and Andrew Stewart have to deal with the loss of the life of their, of their dog. And when, all I ask you is to please take the time to hear the details of the, of the case that Suzanne is dealing with and understand that some discretion and some attention can be paid to, to really respectful and wonderful neighbors who have two very delightful dogs. That's, that's my plea, and I appreciate everyone to hear me out. Everyone here has some, some very meaningful causes and I'm glad that you're here and having a venue to be able to hear it out. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric. My apologies. Sheri, come on down. And after Sheri, Anne Marie Miller.
Yes, I'm Sheri Barnett. I live in Spokane and President Wilkerson and all members of the city council. I see all these gigantic expenses, and I've been seeing them for a long time. The city of Spokane has been not really pinching pennies for a while. That $18 million bridge and many other things, I have watched huge apartment complex after huge apartment complex and things get discounts on taxes for 15 years or 10 years. And as I stroll through my neighborhood, I see the crumbling, it looks like nobody's there anymore, like they're not, like they're not even living there. They're not maintaining things. Foundations are crumbling. The taxes are going up because all this has to be paid for. And so I see businesses that have really busted their behinds trying to keep their business going. And as homelessness moves into an area and drugs, drugs cannot just be treated and re-treated and re-treated and re-treated. No, they must not be legal. In this matter of having to do someone with, oh, what is the name of that can that, Narcan, four or five times and 20 or 30 times in the year? I mean, this is wasting a fortune. And some of the places like UGM and Salvation Army and many other face-to-face seem to sort of get left out of the evaluation center. But I hope that you will all consider that these things cannot keep on wasting the money and lives. They have to be rescued. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Next, we have Emily Cameron, and then we'll have Will Hulings. Oh, Anne Marie.
Hello. I'm here on behalf of Southwest Community Center because at the end of the month, we will lose our funding and shut down. That means that we lose our kids program, homeless outreach services, our daily food pantry, and our food bank. My involvement with this community center started when I was a child. I attended the kids program, and it gave me a place to be while my parents worked. I was fed there, which took stress off my parents when we were a family barely crossing the poverty line. It also gave me a safe place to do my homework and be mentored. I've known our director, Mike Royly, since I was 10 years old. If we lose our funding, we lose our kids program. Families will be struggling now and worry about childcare. Some families will worry about how to feed their children, and people will be out of jobs. We have a food pantry that's open to anybody. If you're hungry, we won't turn you down. My involvement currently with the Southwest Community Center is with our food bank. I've been helping and volunteering my time for 10 years to make sure that hungry people are fed. We have a decent amount of people who are dependent on our food bank. I am dependent on our food bank. If we lose our funding, so many people who can't afford groceries will be affected and hurting. These people include our staff. We are a small group of about 15 people. I am the youngest, and a majority of our volunteers are over 65. We all collect food to feed people and our families. We service about 50 to 100 folks every week in our line from all weeks of life, all walks of life. Some of these people include a young boy whose mom is absent in his life, so he's teaching himself how to cook. I have a Slavic man that kisses my hands because without our food bank, he would struggle to feed his family. And we have very low-income folks who say that without us, they wouldn't be able to eat for the entirety of our month. Working-class folks, low-income families, immigrants, and homeless people without judgment. We give food to- We give food to many organizations. We feed people at a recovery sober living center. We feed folks in the Air Force Base. We feed people at an aviation school. We have a man who comes to pick up for veterans who are homeless and transitioning back into housing. Two of our volunteers take food to feed people in the fire department and to feed people who are displaced and rebuilding from Medical Lake Fire last year.
Thank you, Anne.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hughlings and I live downtown Spokane. Earlier today at noon, I went to Zona Blanca Ceviche Bar on Howard Street. And I seen a couple of you, but I don't know where the other council members were. But basically, I got to listen to Councilman Bingo and then Chad White, the chef, the owner of Zona Blanca, which is like a block away from where I live at. So the problems that he's experienced, I experience every day. Like when I leave here, I'm probably gonna experience some of the same problems he experiences. What am I talking about? People doing drugs out in the open, homeless people everywhere, mentally unstable people. Like today, after I got done at the meeting, I was over walking down Riverside and I watched a female holding her pants up, they were falling off of her, and she was walking down the middle of Riverside, drugged out of her mind. And it's sad. Lisa Brown should be ashamed. I'm gonna be calling her out every frickin' Monday. She should be ashamed that there's all these overdoses. It's sickening. Go on Spokane News, that's where I see all this. It's disgusting, seeing all the overdoses. They revive these people, then they're right back at it again, overdosing. You guys should be ashamed, all this...
Thank you, Will.
Hi, good evening. Emily Cameron, I'm the president and CEO of the Downtown Spokane Partnership. Today I am here because I wanted to acknowledge the press conference that occurred earlier today. We had a couple hundred businesses, residents, and downtown folks who headed over to Zona Blanca to talk about some real concerns related to public safety. Unfortunately, the desperation and the concerns we hear from Chad White and others who own restaurants, hospitality, retail, and businesses in downtown is a message that echoes over and over again. Ongoing chronic criminal activity, drug dealing use, public use, theft, vandalism, threatening behaviors, these are a story that is too common on the streets of downtown. And while there's widespread anxiety over public safety, it is keeping our community away from downtown and we need to look at solutions. We know that downtown should be flourishing. We should be celebrating the significant investment in our park, the podium. We have a great new stadium. We know that there are opportunities for people to experience a great downtown, but we have to work together to ensure that that experience exists. I'm here because I want to say that the Downtown Spokane Partnership stands ready to work with each and every one of you. Thank you, Councilmember Bingo, for convening folks today. But I want to make sure that I say on behalf of the businesses that were there, that we are looking forward to working with each and every one of you, with the administration, with the county. We know it's gonna take every single person in this community to make sure that downtown is safe and that it's a place where businesses can thrive, where citizens can come to visit, where families can enjoy a safe experience in downtown. I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. We recognize that this is not easy and it's gonna take a lot of hard effort. And we recognize that this is gonna mean long-term solutions, but it's also gonna mean immediate solutions. I want to point out a couple of statistics briefly. We know that our calls for service in downtown have tripled in the last year. For the first time since 2020, more businesses have closed than opened. But we can work together and we can reverse that trend. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. That concludes open forum. I just want to remind everyone that next week, we will be having our town hall at West Central Community Center. Please join us there. Entertained a motion for adjournment?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Just been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.